And I will call this a regular meeting of the Bethel Board of Selectmen to order for Tuesday, March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty.
Oh.
There he is. There he is. He appeared. Okay, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I believe no, no correspondence tonight.
No.
And any, I, I think everybody on the line tonight is, is on the agenda at one point, but in case I'm wrong, does it, do we have any public comments this evening? If we do, just you can unmute yourself. And I don't see anybody doing that, so we will go on to item number four, consideration of the minute, minutes of the special meeting of March eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. This was the, if you haven't had a chance to read them, these were the minutes of the meeting where we approved the, the Peterbilt truck for the highway department so we could get it by next. So I will make a motion that we accept the minutes of March eighth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Second by Paul. Any comments? Any comments, questions, corrections? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That carries unanimously. Item number five. We're going to be doing some more truck work tonight for items number five and six. So Bob Dibble has joined us. The first item is approval of a F five fifty Lowboy from Capital Non-Recurring, and this is in your packet from, I believe it's S and H Truck Bodies. Is that correct, Bob?
What's that, Matt?
Uh, S, S and H Truck Bodies, the Lowboy in the amount of twenty. Can you?
I think it's Gingrich Ford.
Right. Bob, you're gonna need, you're gonna need to mute your computer.
Yeah.
There, how's that?
There we go. Perfect. Good job.
All right. Thanks, Deon. Yeah, that's Gingrich Ford, and that's on state bid?
Yes. This is the F, the Ford F five fifty, correct?
That's correct. Yep, that's correct. It's a Lowboy. Yep. Did you want, um, the, the base price of the truck is, hang on, you might find my glasses. The base price of the truck is thirty-four thousand, three sixty-one. Um, there's forty-seven hundred dollars worth of options, snowplow, prep, tab, kit, package, ten-speed automatic transmission, uh, the, the normal stuff that you, that we need on the truck for forty-seven hundred dollars. So the total cost of the chassis is thirty-nine oh seventy-five. All right. And then, um, that truck also comes on through state bid through Gingrich Ford, and it'll come with a, um, a, a platform dump body, which is a flatbed body, and, and also a ten-foot Fisher MC series, which is a municipal, or HC series, which is a municipal series, snowplow. And the, the install, the, the cost of the, the dump body, the snowplow, the snowplow frame, um, and it includes some other stuff, trailer hitch, uh, pentalock, and the, uh, emergency lighting package, and that's twenty-two thousand, four sixty-six. And I think you have a total down there someplace for you, don't you?
Yeah, it says the grand total on page two of that document is fifty-seven thousand. Let me zoom this up a little bit, make sure I got it right.
Yeah, fifty-seven, yeah, fifty-seven thousand, two forty-three ninety cents. That's correct.
Okay. All right. And this is, uh, this is through state bid, correct? You said?
Yeah, oh yeah, the whole, yeah, the whole thing is, yep. That's correct.
What's the, what's the delivery time on that?
He's talking the, the end of May. The, the salesman at Gingrich Ford, which is, which is fine with it. This truck will basically, during the summertime, we use this as our construction vehicle. Where we carry all our crew boxes and big tools and all that equipment when we're doing road construction work. That's just, and that'll work out fine for us for delivery time.
And, uh, this is a replacement for a current vehicle that's going to be retired, correct?
Yes, absolutely. It's a truck eighteen. That truck has a hundred and forty-four thousand miles on it. You know, and a lot of those miles are, are plowing miles.
Yeah.
Um, it, it's got some rot on it. You know, with, with that kind of mileage on those trucks, you know, things, expensive things start happening to them. You know, generally, we're, you know, we're in the miles range where we'll have transmission failures, transfer case bearing failures. You know, and they can add up pretty quick. We can get up in the, you know, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars range worth of repairs on a truck that's a nineteen ninety-nine pretty quickly.
Okay. And what, uh, what, what year is that, that we're playing? What model year?
Nineteen ninety-nine.
Okay. Yeah, that's why I thought, want to make sure. All right.
Matt, just, can I ask, I just want to make, for the record, this has already been approved in previous budgets, correct?
Correct. This is out of current Capital Non-Recurring. Okay, thank you for the question. I'll, I'll try to remember to say that at some point.
What are we gonna do with the old truck?
I'll, I'll probably, I'll, I'll, I'll beg and plead to so, to turn it in to the dealership. I don't know how much I'll get, I, I don't know how much you get for it. They haven't turned anybody down to look at it yet.
All right. Uh, well, to further our discussion, I'll put a motion on the floor that we approve purchase from current Capital Non-Recurring budget, a Ford F five fifty, two thousand and twenty-one, in the amount, uh, as equipped, uh, in the amount of fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars. I rounded it up by a dime.
Nice. Thanks.
Yeah, put leather seats in it.
Perfect.
All right. Second by Rich.
Matt?
Yeah.
Does, does your motion need to include to then be forwarded to the Board of Finance?
Yes. Yeah, good point. So, yeah, to forward to Board of Finance for their, their approval. Uh, so Florida, we have a motion on the floor. Uh, Richard, Paul, floor is open. Any, any, any questions?
No.
No. All right. And I will try your minds. Those in favors, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? That motion carries. All right, second item, uh, and Marty, you're gonna have to advise me if we can follow through with this tonight. This is, um, approval of a body for one of our current trucks, for, for truck, truck number four. This is approval of a dump body, also from current Capital Non-Recurring. Um, and there was an error. I was just talking to Eileen before you logged on, Marty. The, the documentation for this did not get loaded up. Uh, it, something went wrong and a tax form got loaded up instead, got uploaded to the Zoom file. So what Bob, uh, Dibble did just before the meeting started is he, he copied and pasted the information into an email, which I forwarded to you, Paul, and, and Rich. And I, so if, if, if we can move forward, uh, he copied and pasted this. It's even got the logo of the, uh, the, uh, the vendor in the, uh, in the email.
I don't, I didn't see it. Um, I'll, I'll take a look now, if you don't mind.
Yeah, we, we can take it. In the meantime, uh, Bob Dibble, can you just take us through this? What, uh, the cost of the body is, uh, just under twenty-five thousand, and then the labor is eighty-four hundred, right?
Yeah, exactly. So we have, um, two thousand and six Sterling, that the bodies and pretty, the, the body has, the body on the truck now, the current dump, dump body, all-season dump bodies is in pretty bad shape. Um, and that's about the, the years of life you get out of them. You know, we're about, we're almost fifteen years into that, about fifteen years into that truck. Um, the, the dealer, the guy that I'm buying this body from is the same guy who builds our bodies, but he had this, he, he got this body in stock. It's a brand-new body. Um, and it's, and it's a really good deal for what we're getting here. Um, and I can tell you this, in, in probably fifteen years ago, we changed, we had to change the bodies on those Ford L eight, L eight thousands, and we paid forty-two thousand dollars fifteen years ago to do the same exact thing. So we had, he had this body sitting in his yard. Um, and we were, I was talking about it, and he said, look, I'll, I'll sell you the thing for what I paid for, and then, you know, just a little, just, I don't, ten percent more or something like that, whatever it was, and then the cost to install. So this is a really good deal. I mean, this is, you know, if I had to price this out, you know, someplace else, this is probably, this would probably be a fifty thousand dollar job, you know, on, with a, with a, you know, different vendor. So, and when you look at the condition of the truck body that's on there, you know, we can extend the life of that truck down the road, um, you know, quite a bit. You know, the chassis is, the chassis on that truck is in pretty good shape at this point, so.
How, how many more years do you think you'll get out of it?
Um, we should probably, you know, we, we should probably get like, like ten years out of it someplace in there, you know? I'm hoping, right? You know, the only thing that would cause us to go sooner than that is like if we had a catastrophic failure with the truck and, you know, on the chassis or something, which we've never experienced with, with any of the trucks, so.
But could we use the, could we, if, you know, truck died, could we use the body on a different truck sometime in the future?
Yeah, it's a standard, it's, yeah, Rich, it's a standard dump body size. I mean, if we had to, you know, you know, you know, say the thing died in three or four years, I mean, we could buy, we could buy a, a new chassis and put that body on there, need be, yeah.
So, um, the alternative would be to buy another new truck, which is in the hundred and ninety thousand range, correct?
Right, exactly, exactly. You know, I have another, I have a two thousand Sterling in front of this truck. You know, that, that's the next one to get replaced. And then this one, or there's, or one of the other ones that are in, oh, they're all within the same year, couple of years, would be third down the line to get replaced. You know, you know what I'm saying?
Yep. Okay. So, uh, so the base price for the body package is just under twenty-five thousand, and then labor is eighty-four hundred. Is that a firm number, or do we, do we, what do we need to do tonight? Uh, approve?
No, that's it. That's, that's it. Thirty-three, two ninety-seven.
Okay.
And ten, and ten cents if you want, plus ten cents if you want leather seats in the truck.
Okay. Um, all right. Well, well, when you, when you can locate the, uh, before we go to the Board of Finance, let's go to the Board of Finance, too. Um, get that, get that invoice, that pro forma invoice that they sent, that you copied and pasted me, so I could attach it. Because I remember.
Yeah, I, yeah. He was supposed to send me that, um, yesterday email, and he, and he didn't get it to me.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll, yeah, I'll have that chased down, no problem.
All right. Well, then I.
Is this coming out of Capital Non-Recurring?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to put a motion on the floor that we approve the, uh, BER ten twenty-seven La Rochelle All-Season Dump Body, uh, as presented in the package as presented, uh, by the Highway Superintendent, in the amount not to exceed thirty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven, to be charged to current Capital Non-Recurring Budget and subject to Board of Finance approval. For a second?
Second.
All right. Two seconds. All right. Any, any further questions or, uh, discussion?
Do we get any scrap value for an old body?
No.
I'm always looking for revenue, you know?
No, I know, I know. Believe me, if I could get something for it, I would have. Trust me on that one.
Okay. How about the tailgate, Bob? Is the tailgate worth saving?
Those, the, the tailgate is, that's a different body manufacturer. It's an Everest body that's on that truck now.
Anything else we got with it?
Uh, Marty?
Oh, yeah, no, I'm glad the tailgate's not gonna go with the truck. No, I'll keep the tailgate, because that's what you're asking me, Rich, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Man, I was just gonna say, the ideal situation was that this was available for the public to view in advance, but because this is a regular meeting, you can add things to the agenda. I look at it that this is something that you could have added to the agenda.
Okay.
Go through it.
Okay. Well, the public will have more opportunity to view it anyway, because.
That's right, because it's gotta go to the Board of Finance. They can sit through that, too.
Right. Okay, very good. Uh, so I'll try your minds. Those in favor of approving this sale, moving it forward to the Board of Finance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you very much. Thanks, Bob.
Okay, sorry about the phone thing, speaker thing, whatever it was. I don't know what went on there, but.
It happened.
I'll get it tuned up for the next one.
Okay. All right, thanks.
All right, everybody. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too, thanks.
Item number seven, uh, consideration of the Fire Commission ordinance. Um, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the Fire Commission ordinance as it was last, uh, voted on by this body. Um, given the feedback at the public hearing last week, I see no reason to make any changes, so make a motion that we approve it and publish it. Um, is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay, second by Paul. Any questions, any comments?
No, we, we have been talking about this for quite a while, and it's well overdue for the town.
Yep, it is. Uh, Marty, the next step is we have to publish this in the paper within thirty days, correct?
No, you have to, um, what, what you have to do is, um, I don't think it's gotta be published within thirty days, but when you've got to publish it, the catch is it's not effective until thirty-one days after the publication date.
Okay, all right.
If, if it turns out we can publish it on the first of the month, then what will happen is like on April first, um, the other way around, May first, it probably would be effective, and you'd put that, and it's just a synopsis. It's not the entire thing, so.
Okay, great. So, um, Deon, we'll, we'll work that up tomorrow and get it in as soon as the next opportunity. All right then. Uh, okay, so we have a motion on the floor to, uh, move forward and approve this and publish it. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? That carries. That is, that was some good work. I want to thank my colleagues and thank Marty for that. Um, item, item number eight, consideration of approval of master lease agreement for the solar panels at the Track and Field Facility. Uh, we actually have three documents on here, and the one we're going to be, uh, talking about tonight first is the, uh, the Track and Field Facility. And Marty, do you have any comments on this, and how, what we need to do to move forward on?
The, the reason, the reason why we're not acting on all three, I know Matt knows this, maybe Richie, I don't know about Paul. I don't. Uh, all right, that's, the problem is, is that, um, our building inspectors are a little bit hesitant to sign off on anything for Johnson School and for Rockwell School, more Rockwell than Johnson, because what happened was Rizzo ended up putting stuff, hanging stuff from the rafters, putting additional stress on the roof. So he's concerned that putting something on those roofs could be a problem. He did not want to do a permit or sign off until he had information from an engineering firm that everything would be okay. It's my understanding through the grapevine, I talked to somebody this afternoon at the, at the leasing company, BSI, that, uh, BCI, I'm sorry, that they have something that says it's gonna be okay, but they haven't submitted it. And, and so it was decided that at least go forward with the one that we don't have a problem with, and that is the Track and Field Pavilion. Uh, the idea was, uh, if work had to be done on the roofs at either Johnson or Rockwell School, the cost would be different. So it was decided that maybe we should just go forward with the one that we definitely know about now, and then as that information comes in, we can go forward with the other two.
Okay. Just, just for general knowledge, I wasn't aware of that.
Sorry.
All right, so the, uh, the, the document that we're working with then is out of the three, it's, it's the one. Hold on a second.
Let me just say, for, the master lease encompasses all, it can encompass all three of the projects. All right, but what's happening is, what we're gonna be looking at is, I, I think, uh, we would approve the master lease, and then we would only approve, uh, schedule, I think it's two and exhibit two, which is the, uh, only the, the schedule and the exhibit for the, uh, pavilion. That's it. The other one, we would wait until we get, uh, final numbers on.
Yep. Okay, so, so we're, we're actually gonna do this in, in two votes then, right? Um, first the master lease. Correct, Marty?
He's muted again. I'm trying to find out which, which it is.
I think it's the document that says Final Proposed BCI Closing Document, Bethel, uh, oh-three dash oh-one dash twenty-one. And then when you open up the document, it says Town of Bethel, Connecticut, Lease Purchase Financing, one million, two hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars, twenty-seven cents. And it has.
It is. It's lease schedule number two, all right, and, uh, and the exhibit two, I believe. Matt, I sent you the email. How much did I say it was?
Uh, hold on a second. Is, is, is that the one that's, that's like one point two million, one point two four two? No?
Oh. All right, here it is. The total cost, uh, through the leasing agreement is four hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty-five cents. And that's based on a payment schedule that's attached, uh, at the annual rate of two point six five percent, and it's a, a payment schedule of, it looks like yearly for, looks like fifteen years. And the amount that we repay every month is about thirty-eight, thirty-eight thousand, every year, thirty-eight thousand, seven twenty-two. But I, I have to tell you, this lease agreement is based on what the rate was when they put this together. This could change in the future. The longer it takes, especially for the other two, the higher the interest rate may be. So that's why we said at least let's get going on the one that we know we're not gonna have any problems with.
Okay.
And, and what, what we have after this is you have the actual construction agreement through the company that's gonna do it.
Okay.
So the leasing company is gonna come up with the money to pay for the construction company to get going and to deal with this.
Okay. All right, so, uh, what was that, what was that figure again for the, for the Track and Field? It's four?
He's muted again.
Yeah.
Was he got an auto mute?
It is. It is.
He must, yeah.
It's four seventy-four, one thirty-nine, forty-five for the lease agreement.
Okay. All right, so I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the master lease agreement for the Track and Field Training Center in the amount of four hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty-five cents.
Second. For discussion.
All right.
And also, you, you want to refer to the Board of Finance, because at some point, you're gonna have to have a town meeting.
Yeah, uh, yeah, refer, and refer to, refer to Board of Finance. Yeah, the next item on the agenda is to, uh, establish a date for the town meeting. I've got it, I, I gotta set up for that. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to move forward with the Track and Field, uh, solar panels. Um, any discussion?
Just to, just out of curiosity, uh, was there an ROI done on this? Relative to savings on, on electricity?
Yeah, Adam or Gary, uh, would you, would you care to comment on that?
Yes, how you doing, Paul?
Fine, thank you.
Uh, I do have the, uh, sheet that we, um, did share at one of the other, uh, Board of Selectmen meetings. Uh, can I, uh, share that right now to show, put it on the screen? Would that be helpful?
Yeah. Yeah, I remember we did, we did go over that, Paul, when it was.
I, I know, but that's been quite a while ago.
September, Paul, I understand.
I'm getting old, you know?
No, it's all good.
The gray hair is telling it off.
I just need access to, access to, uh, post it for you.
Yeah. Hey, Dan, can you make, uh, make Adam a co-host?
Sorry about that.
No, no problem.
I had it all prepared, so I figured, uh, this way, if a, a question came up, I could go ahead and pull it up quick for everybody.
You anticipated our.
Right. You should be able to.
Yep. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Um, so this was the full layout for, uh, the Track and Field, um, with actual solar value, so this is the actual savings.
Okay, can anybody see this?
No.
Yeah, it's just, it's a blank. There you go.
I always, it, it, it doesn't show you what you're actually presenting sometimes, so I apologize. Um, so columns, uh, B and C are for the Track and Field, and, um, this was done out across all those sites. Um, so as you can see, um, the Track and Field, you had about fifty-one thousand, um, fifty-two thousand and change between solar savings and actual revenue, because on this, remember, with doing the municipal lease, unlike on a power purchase agreement, uh, the Town of Bethel is going to be receiving this ZREC income. Okay, so not only do you get the savings in column B, but then you get the revenue for each site in the following one for the revenue, right? And so when you carry this across between the Track and Field, Rockwell, Johnson, the three sites in the RFP, which included the ten years of O and M, and the final, uh, lease payment for the three sites, the, um, year one savings was thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighty-five cents.
Okay.
So it's pretty substantial compared to just trying to do a, a PPA. And the other thing, um, is, is working with the Energy Committee, which I have to give Mr. Craddy a lot of credit for, um, the ability to go ahead and, and be adaptive, right? So in a power purchase agreement, you're kind of held to not being able to make any tweaks to anything in the future. Well, um, you know, Mr. Craddy's very knowledgeable in the ISO, which is the independent, uh, system operator of the grid, and he's also very knowledgeable in what's going on with batteries. And, uh, there's been a lot of plans and a lot of discussions about, you know, what the Energy Committee could do in order to make that campus a much more developed campus on energy solutions, and, you know, so by doing this municipal lease, we'll have the ability to add batteries. So when batteries become, you know, more cost av- advantageous and also have more incentives, the Town of Bethel will be able to actually own and operate their own battery on their solar systems. So, uh, you know, this is a, a very good, uh, package, uh, for the, for the Town of Bethel.
Thank you, thank you. I remember it now, okay?
Yeah, no problem. And any, any further questions, be more than happy to, uh, to go through them.
I just want to make a point to the Board of Selectmen that you have to remember, too, that once it's up and operational, we have to enter into an agreement for somebody to maintain it.
The first ten years are part, were part of the RFP, so there will be an O and M, uh, for that, and, you know, to, you know, show that they are maintaining it for those first years, and then you have the ability to renew with them, or you'll have the ability to select somebody else, uh, that, you know, that you may want. So you, you kind of have the most, uh, flexibility, if you want to look at it from that standpoint as well.
Okay.
Do you have any idea what those costs are annually?
Yes, uh, right here, uh, down below is, uh, the cost that's actually already factored into the, uh, proposal.
That's the thirty-seven forty-two, correct?
Yes, correct.
And that's for all three of the sites, not just one?
Correct. Yeah. Yeah, because basically what you're looking at is, uh, it's more or less just the, the, the warranties are there, it's to cover the manpower and labor to come out and, and make any necessary corrections that need to be done.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Appreciate it.
Thank you again.
Would you like me to, I could take it down or, or good?
Uh, Rich and Paul, are you guys, uh, guys good with that? Any other questions?
I'm satisfied. You know, it just refreshed my memory.
No problem. Yep, and I'm, I'm good with it, too.
Okay, great. All right, so thank you very much. All right, so, so we have a motion on the floor to move forward with this, uh, as, as, as I stated. So, uh, any other questions or comments?
Uh, you're, you're waiting for the engineering report to do the other buildings, then?
Correct.
And that's coming through our, our.
Yeah.
I, I believe it's coming through JD Solar, who's the, actually gonna be the construction company that's gonna build the, the, uh, build the solar panels onto the roofs. And like I said, I was told, I haven't seen anything, that they already have finished, and they don't see that there's gonna be a problem, but I haven't gotten anything yet, so. Fine.
Well, we'll, we'll move forward as soon as, we might be able to do it before the town meeting, too, but well.
The one thing, if I could add to that, is they're just waiting for an EPC contract. Right now, it'd be kind of like they're spending a lot of engineering money, and they don't have a contract, uh, to go ahead and, and put forth. So I think the next, uh, item on the agenda is to, uh, move forward on the EPC contracts, and that would allow them to go ahead and provide that.
Yeah, but I think that just so the board knows, we're only talking about going forward right now with the Track, the Track Pavilion. Now, we're not talking about the other two yet. And I also, when I spoke today to. And I also, when I spoke today to B C I, uh, to, uh, what's his name, Gene Rogero? He, I told him, I said, you know, if it's a question of they need more money because they're doing this engineering work, that they should redo the numbers and send them to us so we know what they are. That was it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work that out.
Okay, let's just vote on it.
All right, so, uh, those in favor, signify by saying aye, please?
Aye.
Right, all right, that carries. And, uh, and we'll, we'll resolve those other things very quickly and, and get back to you.
Uh, Matt, this is Gary.
Yeah, hi Gary.
How are you?
Good.
Good. I was just wondering, Marty, can I give you a call so maybe we can wrap this up with a discussion tomorrow or at least try to?
Yes, but it's gotta be, it's gotta be later in the afternoon.
Okay, I'll, 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 uh, I'll check in with Matt for your number and, uh, or you can find.
I, I can give you my number now, it's.
All right, fire away.
Two oh three, seven oh nine three nine eight.
Nine three nine eight, seven nine oh, you said?
Yep, seven nine oh, nine three nine eight.
I'll call you later in the day.
Okay, great.
Thank you, thank you, Matt.
All right, thanks. Okay, so that carries. And then, uh, the last item on the agenda for tonight is establishing a town meeting. So this has to go to the board of finance and of course, we're in the middle of budget stuff. We have a public hearing, uh, this coming Monday, uh, and then they will probably meet either that night or the next night to finalize the budget. I'm guessing it'll be Tuesday night. So, um, I think my, and Marty, uh, given the, the timeframe for publishing a, um, a notice for a town meeting, I think what makes the most amount of sense is to, you see, it's how we have a, we have the town budget meeting, town meeting on the budget coming up on Monday, April fifth, and that's gonna be an in-person meeting. Um, why don't we set aside a, a special town meeting, maybe at six thirty in the same location?
Yeah, I, I, that, that sounds okay to me, but the one thing I just realized is from the way the agenda is, uh, what we should have on there, and maybe you might wanna add it to the agenda, is to approve the construction contract with J D Solar. All right, that's part of it. And I did put that in the documents, I put all three of them in there.
Okay.
Um, and then you might wanna roll it all together and send it on to the board, so at least we're done with the track and field pavilion.
Okay. All right, um, so I should add that to the, 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 uh, motion that we just voted on?
I, I would add that to the agenda and then you can discuss that. There's not much, I've gone through all three of the contracts already with everybody that was involved and I don't have a problem at all with what they have.
Okay.
And it, the cost is just, it's a little bit less than what the lease is, but I think that's because there's a lot of advantages for, Adam, you can correct me, there's a lot of advantages tax-wise for the people that are doing it, so.
All right, all right, so I'll make a motion that we add to the agenda under item eight A, like Adam. Uh, uh, construction agreement with J D Solar for the, uh, track and field facility. Consideration of, there's a, okay, the second by Rich, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we are now at item eight A and I'll make a motion that, uh, we approve the construction agreement with, uh, J D Solar for the, uh, track and field facility, um, subject to final review by the town attorney, which has already happened, but, you know, we'll, we'll leave it in his hands to work out the details. Um, and pass that along to the board of finance as well. Is there a dollar amount that needs to go with that, Marty, with that motion?
Yeah, there's, uh, they have down here, the P V system price was four sixty nine, four four five. Just a little bit less than what the lease is.
Okay. All right, uh, so I add that, four sixty nine, four four five in the motion. Um, there's second, all right, Paul seconded. Any discussion?
No.
Okay, hearing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries. So now we're at item number nine, I'll make a motion that we, uh, establish a special town meeting for the purpose of, um, of approving the, uh, solar panel arrangement for the track and field facility at six thirty on Monday, April fifth, at the Bethel High School Track and Field Training Facility. Second by Paul, third by Rich, any?
It, it just the one, this includes the construction contract too, right?
Yeah.
Master lease for the, for the one and the, and the construction contract.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Okay, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries. All right, we shall move forward. And.
So it's, so it's six thirty for the special meeting, seven o'clock is going to be the renter town meeting?
Correct.
Okay, and this is at the high school?
Uh, yeah, the, where we got our shots.
Fieldhouse.
Yeah.
Paul, Paul, the field house.
The field house?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, so, uh, thank you very much, everybody. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, motion by Rich, second by me. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries.